And I will call to order the regular meeting of the Region Nine Board of Education for April 26, 2022. And our first Board of Business is approval of the minutes of March 10th, March 15th, and April 4th. We can hold them individually or as a group? For preference. Okay, so we'll take them individually. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th? Okay, ladies, there is a second. Okay. Is there any comments, additions? Hearing none, all in favor? For Cheryl, are you in?
None.
Right. Okay. May I have a motion to approve them since March 15th? Karen, any discussions, additions? Hearing none, all in favor? March 15th, yes? And now we have the minutes of the April 4th Annual District Hearing. Can I have a motion to approve them? Karen, your second? Yes, you may.
I will second.
All right, ladies. Any edits, additions, comments on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
I abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay, so it's...
That was a DEI, was conflicting with DEI.
Okay, so, actually...
I did review the notes.
Okay, so actually, I'm just gonna... This is a weird point of order, is that if everyone is abstaining, it's a legal procedure more than a meeting. It's not really a meeting, a district hearing, so we don't need a quorum for that. Therefore, we wouldn't need a quorum to approve the minutes for it. I think it's more just a formality, so barring any objection, we'll approve them as well. Okay? And that brings us on to item number three, which is student comment. Mr. Fliegel mentioned, you have four of yours.
Before events, because I mostly already know, Mr. Fliegel, I would like to introduce some Griffin Ellis and Portman, that regular one, but as they had, very important game in six-ish against Western, the boys across. So he couldn't be here, and I couldn't think of a better person to represent our students. If you don't know, then it is senior class president, and if you do know, he is the first student I met when I took a tour of this building. And we, to say we don't run into each other multiple times a day would be another statement. But, for the vet, I'd like to introduce you to Ben, who will be doing both noteworthy news for tonight. Ben, take it away.
Certainly, I'm very glad to be presenting all of the noteworthy news, and I'd like to thank Dr. Almeida for this opportunity. So, you know, once a month at each Region Nine Board of Education meeting, a student, in this case, means the pleasure of sharing the accomplishments, recognition, and reward and awards that our students and staff have achieved. So this isn't an exhaustive list, but these are some of the highlights. So there's a lot of stuff, so of course, I invite you to read in your packets, but we also have this, I'm just gonna present this here. So, on April 20, 15 seniors and 22 juniors were inducted into the 10th cohort of the Joel Barlow Legacy Society. The keynote speaker was our STEM Department Chair, JT Shem. It was a, I wasn't there, but I was told that it was a wonderful ceremony. Next up, Catherine Gatauski and Tobias Manaya represented Joel Barlow High School at this year's Columbia's Youth Virtual Summit. Now, this was a summit to do with climate change, and the summit concluded with participants being introduced to the Leadership Certificate, a recognition they can earn by completing a series of sustainable activities for themselves and for their communities. Now, knowing Katie and Tobias, in a few board meetings, you're probably gonna have Griffin here telling you that they have received that certificate, so stay tuned for that. Next up, take a little drink of water. Isabel Petrin has been named a semifinalist for the 2022 Presidential Scholar. Isabel was among 200 and, pardon me, 620 semifinalists who have been selected from a pool of over 5,000 candidates. So Isabel was offered this opportunity this year, thanks to her recognition through a Connecticut Science Fair, for her research project, and now, gotta read directly from the paper, unexpected UVR mutation burden in cutaneous melanoma. Now, I looked that up, and basically, it's the effect that sunburn has on skin cancer. Now, Isabel, she's going to Dartmouth this fall, she's going to hopefully study there for, become a pre-med student, become an oncologist. So this is very apropos for her future career plans, and we wish her all the best on the Presidential Scholar. Next up, the Brookfield Craft Center held its 7th Annual Artists on the Rise Exhibition, where Barlow, it's safe to say, swept house. We won the first place digital award, that was Angela Humphrey. We also won the second place digital award, that was Christina Roby. We won the first place in painting with the single medium, that was Griffin Ellis, he should be sitting here now. And best in show, that was our own Maya Carter. If you wanna take a look at any of these paintings, they're paintings and pieces of sculpture and jewelry, they're out in the hallway, you can check them out after the meeting. I'd also like to congratulate Reed Cooper and Elizabeth Hadriani, who are our CAS High School Arts residents. Now, Reed received his award for music and Elizabeth for art, they were celebrated at a ceremony at April 5th. Now, Elizabeth is a friend of mine, and she actually told me that she's going to be presenting some of her work at Riser's in Easton on May 1st, so if you wanna check that out, you can certainly go there. We'd also like to congratulate Jalen Johnson and yet again Isabel Petrin, who are our CIAC Scholar Athletes for this year, Jalen for tennis and Isabel for soccer. They'll have a banquet on May 22nd. Now for the debate news, which is special for you. So Ian O'Reilly, friend of mine, he's a senior, he competed in the World Individual Debate and Public Speaking Championships, also known as the Widpisq. He was a finalist in two of the four events he competed in, debating and impromptu speaking. Particularly, I wanna highlight impromptu speaking, where you're given a topic and you have two minutes to prepare a five-minute speech, and you're allowed no materials whatsoever. So being a finalist in that is really amazing, so round of applause for Ian there. In January, Ian qualified by being number one at one of our parliamentary speaking tournaments, and that allowed him to represent the US, along with 114 other top speakers from a bunch of other countries, including Australia, Dr. McKinnon, Canada, China, Cyprus, Hong Kong, India, Lithuania, Morocco, Pakistan, South Africa, the UK, and of course, the United States. Also, on March 26, Barlow debate speakers dominated state finals in both varsity and novice. Now, there's a lot here that was written by Mr. Smith, and if you want to read that, you certainly can, but I'll just give you the highlights. There are four major titles you can win, speaking and team, both in novice and varsity, and we won three of those four. Our champion varsity speaker was Graham Litz, my partner and friend, I was the second varsity speaker, and Ian was our third varsity speaker. Ian and Ali were also the championship team, that's Ian O'Reilly and Ali Sadiqi, they did very, very well. And freshman Cade Frabel was the novice skate champion, and his partner Griffin Speck, different Griffin, was the second-place novice team. Now, just a little side note, Griffin and Cade, they were the second-place novice team, but they were actually tied with first, so if we're gonna be Barlow here, we really won all four top spots. So next up, we've got the robotics team, they performed extremely well during their qualifying matches at the Hartford event on April 23rd and 24th. They also managed to make it to the quarterfinals, where they were placed out in alliance. Now, that's a lot of complex robotics terms that I don't fully understand, but needless to say, they did very, very well, and just to quote this, "They easily scored the most points out of any of the three teams on their alliance," which my friend Tyler tells me is a remarkable achievement. Unfortunately, that wasn't enough to overcome the opposing alliance, and they were eliminated in the first round. Nevertheless, they still won the Rockwell Automation Creativity Award for their innovative rotating arm design. You saw a prototype of that in an earlier board meeting, which they called "The Hanger." Sadly, the team did not earn enough points to qualify for the New England District Championships this year, but I am certain, certain, you will see them next year. Is that right, Mr. Paola? Sounds good. Genevieve Seedorf participated in the Connecticut Music Educators Association in the All-Straight Music Festival beginning of April, part of the member of the All-State Treble Choir. And so that's all of the non-athletic announcements, so now on to sports. Nate Oppenhan placed second in the 100 Fly at the CIAC State Open Championships on March 19th. Our cheerleaders placed second in the New England Regional Championships. The girls' basketball team won the 2021-2022 Herald Swaffield Sportmanship Award, and there's a lot more text about that, it was given by the IAABO9, which is our Basketball Officiating Board, you can read more about that. We're also very proud to share that our teams have won five separate SWC Sportmanship Awards. That's girls' basketball, gymnastics, boys' ice hockey, which is really good this year, wrestling, and boys' swimming. These teams have each received the SWC Sportmanship Award for 2021 to 2022. And I just wanna highlight this, this is a really special recognition, because it's determined by the opposing coach and player votes. So that means that all the other teams, even our vicious rivals in Weston, said that Bar... Hey, Weston, make my personal here. Oh, you know you're attacking Weston. I'm not attacking Weston, but they are our rivals, what can I say? It's actually honor, we can keep the bench. Anyways, yeah, so even our rivals voted for us, so Barlow, great sportsmanship, great character, I really wanna applaud Barlow Athletics. That's why we still have two more points. Rob Tyne, former head football coach and current assistant football coach and assistant athletic director, has been selected to receive a lifetime achievement award from the National Football Foundation. Now, Coach Tyne is gonna be honored at a banquet in May, I just wanna say, as I've looked through the yearbooks, Coach Tyne has been here for a very long time, he's been with Barlow all the way, he's been really remarkable. I'd also like to mention that John Disler, head boys' lacrosse coach, has been selected as Connecticut High School Coaches Association Boys' Lacrosse Coach of the Year. Now, I think it speaks to how amazing he is, he was able to get Griffin Ellis from presenting to all of you tonight, and instead got him on the field, which I'm sure every student would want to be at a board event meeting. Regardless, he's really amazing, he will be honored at a banquet on May 5th. Now, the last thing I'd like to announce, and I believe some of you are here for it, was that world language teacher Chris Poulis was selected as one of only five teachers to be inducted into the National Teachers Hall of Fame. This is an amazing award, I talk to Mr. Poulis a lot, and it was very difficult for him to get, and it was really just remarkable, so I wanna congratulate Mr. Poulis on that. So I think those are all of the many, many things, I have a feeling this one was a little bit longer than other noteworthy news, newses before, so I didn't even knew you were coming. Thank you. But if you have any questions, feel free to fire away. Uh, yes?
I would just like to say that your enthusiasm is infectious.
He's actually very shy, he's a shy guy.
I thoroughly enjoyed the noteworthy news, and I've always loved hearing about all the accomplishments of our students, because it's really remarkable, I do so, thank you.
Aw, thank you. Sarah?
I was just gonna say, for those who don't know, or maybe new parents to Joel Barlow, is the Legacy Society something that you would like to explain? I'm not sure everyone might be familiar.
Okay, so the Legacy Society is a society for a lot of high-achieving students. It's unlike other societies, like the National Honor Society, it isn't selected by application, but rather by induction. So members of the administration select students who they think would be good fits for the Legacy Society, and it's a great Barlow award. Dr. Almeida, would you like to talk a little bit more about it?
It's very own, which is special, it's Barlow's own, it's not a national, and students have a high criteria, it was my first time participating in such an event, and we had a wonderful class of juniors, we'll see if they're representing the school. And it's for different characteristics that resemble who Joel Barlow was, the dramatic scholar. So it's a really, it was a very nice, neat event, the parents were there, it was, as you described, it's an awesome event, so, thank you.
A lot of my friends were inducted, I was very glad to hear that. Yeah, it was really great. Any other questions?
I have a comment, nice job.
Awesome, thank you.
Great job.
You may have a job, but you're graduating. Not you would have another job.
Official student comment.
I know he's gonna get going, but I do wanna just publicly acknowledge that later on in the agenda, I will be speaking about the open campus, and I would be in this, if I didn't mention, this young man and his fellow senior class officers are instrumental in much of the work that was done in gathering data from other schools, not only in our dirt, the surrounding towns. And we spent a lot of quality time working on this open campus to, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, I know he's in the lead, and he's got a lot of work to do, but I want to announce that for the reasons of his training that I left, gets a lot of credit for the work that I saw behind this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. I think with that, I must be going, I have three APs next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so toodle-oo, everybody. Goodbye, those of you who are watching online.
Every school is a visionary, they're all right. We have a piece. It's too small every time I say it.
Okay. That brings us to item three, which is, four, which is public comment. Board member comment, is there any board member comment? Yes.
I would just like to thank Dr. Almeida and his staff and the students who gave myself and Karen and Sarah a tour last week of the school. It was a great morning, and you put together such a thorough and thoughtful tour, and I know the organization alone takes time and thought and energy, so thank you. And my tour guide was Griffin Ellis, who was, I was hoping I could thank personally tonight, but he was outstanding. It was just really a great morning to see Barlow in action, and the positive energy and enthusiasm from the students. And I was in a Spanish class, a honors chemistry class, and an American government class, and the teachers were, it was just great to be in those classes. They were enthusiastic, they were engaged, the students were engaged, it was just a great morning. So thank you all, everybody who was involved, for sharing the school with us and for really making it a great experience.
Yes, I was gonna say the same thing, I echo your sentiments, it was a wonderful experience. I was actually floored and blown away by the students and the engagement. I guess I wasn't anticipating as much engagement as I saw, and just like excitement and enthusiasm and, I mean, all the various comments, it was really great. I don't know, high school, I just remember everyone like nodding off, and this was not that at all. So I think it was a great view into seeing our kids get back to normal, and yet have social lives, that have, you know, bustle and hustle through the hallways, it was a positive experience.
It was, it was nice to see everybody smiling and happy, it was really great.
We thank you for coming, because you gave us a lot of feedback, shared with the staff, they were very open to you coming, they continue to be open, any more members wants to come visit in the future, I think it's a great thing, you can see it for yourself, it's one thing for us to sit here and say, this is all a great thing, you know, you can see it, you still feel the energy, so thank you for coming, making that day with us, because it was very good, positive, I hear it from the students. So I don't know, you guys, it's a very, very engaged, so thank you for coming over.
Further board member comment? Okay, I just have one comment that, partially to, I was honored last night to be able to see democracy at its finest at the annual town meeting for Town of Easton. And there was a comment made asking whether or not there were safeguards put into place relating to some of the unexpended purchases from last year. And, you know, while it wasn't appropriate at the meeting to, you know, go into detail or to provide any details, I just wanted to provide awareness to the public that we are undergoing an audit, that we're taking a look at everything. And I did wanna make the board also aware that I did get a call from the Rocky Smith, and their investigative portion of their audit has been completed, and they're anticipating two to three weeks, and then they will be able to share with us their report. So again, I just wanted to provide that update to board members and to the board. Okay. That brings us on to administrative reports.
Okay, great, well, good evening, everybody. Today, I was honored to see the mock car crash at Joel Barlow High School. It was one of the better-run events I've seen facilitating a mock car crash in the districts I've worked in. A special thanks to Laura Wheatley and to our student actors who participated, and Laura organized the event, Gabriella, Sasha, and Brian, makeup was done by Julia. There are other members of the town community who are instrumental in organizing the event, so special thanks to our SRO, Peter Ann, Reading Police Chief, Mark O'Donnell, Reading Fire Chief, Sean McKenny, and Officer Brandon, who shared a really emotional story about his experiences recently. I was in amongst the students when the event first started, and there were some nervous laughter, as you would expect. But as the event unfolded and towards the middle and end of the event, the students were really paying close attention, and I think it really resonated with the students, which is the intent of that. So I really wanted to thank the Joel Barlow staff, faculty, Dr. Almeida, our town officials, and some Laura Wheatley who brought that event. And you can see pictures of that on our Instagram and Facebook page as well. Mr. Petrazelli, our Director of Finance Operations, who could not be here this evening, so if you have any questions about the budget project summary, please email them to me and to him, and we'll be happy to get back to you about all his demands concerning the finances. I do have a transfer request, and that is in the amount of $19,200, which is being transferred from tuition private school. We have a student who was intending to be outplaced in a private setting, and we're able to keep that student in district, so those funds are no longer needed in the tuition private school category. And we wish to transfer those funds in the amount of $19,200 to other professional services, because students now in the district, the funds are needed in that location. So that is something that...
Okay, so, I need to talk to you.
Transfer from tuition private school to other professional services.
So, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that.
So then, so then I presume just the substance of the transfer, the substan, we don't need that for the special educations that were allocated for professional fees or?
No, I think it was an outplacement for a private school, and instead, the services will be rendered in-house in Barlow, so...
Oh, that's professional.
It's the same, it's the same cost center, it's a special ed cost center, within the special ed cost center.
Okay.
So other, there's another professional services account, Ian's specialty.
Okay.
So I think, actually, it sounds, you know, great to me that we can bring a student, service them here, especially, you know, and so... So given that, and our policy for transfers and excess $10,000, we require board approval, can someone, I wanna make a motion to approve transfer of $19,200 from tuition private school to other professional services?
So, second.
Karen, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Two nouns?
Just one further, one further item, if you don't mind. I'd like to draw your attention to item 8G, which is the recommendation to non-renew a faculty member as a reduction in force. And that first non-renewal is as a result of an administrator's request for a reassignment to a teaching position. And that will open an assistant principal position, which we would like to post in the near future, so it's something that we'll need to talk about. If it pleases the board, we would like to supervise and conduct the assistant principal search process in the same way that we conducted the search for the Director of Special Education. And just to remind everyone that the process that we followed when we hired the Director of Special Education is that we posted the position internally and externally, that the superintendent screened the applicants down to approximately six to eight candidates, whereby there was a first-round interview and a second-round interview. The first-round interview consists of key stakeholders and board members. And the intent of the first-round interview is to narrow the field from eight candidates to approximately three to four candidates, and the intent of the second round is to go deeper, where we ask additional questions, we ask the candidate to perform a task. And the third round would be to bring the successful candidate to the full court. And so I'd just like to, if we proceed with 8G, then we're gonna end up in that place.
So we'll see where we land, I don't want us to go kind of off the rails and here into a different agenda item. I think that we will approach the composition, the committee, and the structure, and the rules of, so, AP at a future meeting, that's been appropriate, I just feel like, tonight, we don't have it on the agenda, so I think that that's something that should be posted on the agenda before we have a discussion.
Okay, and just let everyone know that we'll be posting for that petition.
Question with respect to the delivery of education reports, as we saw the college describe, will, if I assume that there would be no impact on the number of classes and the delivery of education, that just really does the allocation responsibility, is that fair? Just wanna make sure if I'm stuck in class size or what's being offered.
Okay, any further administrative reports?
Just a quick update from dump the piece of your book.
So we have entered into the spring season, which is also the annual climate survey season. So I'm pleased to share that the district climate committee worked as a team to really consider some slight provisions to our climate survey this year, and just to remind the board that the purpose of our annual climate survey is to gather feedback and input from grade 2 through 12 students, staff, and parents, to support the school climate that is physically, emotionally, intellectually safe, free from bullying, harassment, and discrimination. It's all was born out of 2012 legislation, and it's really to create safe school climates and have a response to bullying. And so we've been doing these annual surveys for many years, and so this year is no different in that respect. The components of the survey include safety, learning focus, relationships, sense of place, and professional conduct. For our Barlow students, it is roughly 50 questions, it is a longer survey than what we administer to the elementary or the middle school students. This year, there was a concerted effort to include the student input on the Joel Barlow Climate Committee, and an effort to ask more follow-up questions. So if a student says, "I don't feel comfortable in the setting," or "I don't feel comfortable for a particular reason," then there's an opportunity for them to provide more info. Then really trying to allow those students who wanna share their experiences with us to give us as much information as they choose to share, so that we can create school goals to support just a safe climate. The survey will be administered in wellness classes and also some advisory classes, and to try and get the greatest participation possible. In years past, it has been done in both locations, we tend to see a better participation rate when it's done in the... I'd like to take any questions about this survey. Can we get a copy?
That was gonna be my question as well.
I'm happy to, I didn't bring all the questions with me, but I'm happy to share that with you, I have them, I just... When the current procedure is served, we will have a link that includes all of the questions on the survey. I'm happy to share these, and questions for the board, you'll notice they're, they're roughly the same as what we asked in years past, four times.
Okay, so I'd like to see it, yes?
Yes.
It's, when you said that you're adding some questions to get more detail around specific situations, are those forbidden questions?
I'll give you a couple of specific examples, I actually have the full survey. I actually have the full survey with me. So in some cases, it says, "If you have been treated unfairly at times, it was because of..." And there's a whole list of options. The students can mark yes or no. And then it says, "If you answered other, please explain." So an opportunity for kids to share why they feel they've been treated unfairly. Another example is, "I feel like the administrators at Barlow treat me fairly." Not true, somewhat true, true, quite true, very true. If you have been treated unfairly, please explain.
Those new questions or those just?
The follow-ups are new. So that we've asked the questions in the past, we have fewer open-ended follow-up questions and we've added more.
Is the survey anonymous?
The survey is anonymous to the extent that it can, right? So depending on how much information the student provides about, in terms of the demographic questions, if there was a desire, which of course there is not, to drill down and look at the certain subgroups, it wouldn't be identified, right? No one has access to this other than our internal team and it's an optional survey. So when students fill out the survey, they're not including their name, they're not including the contact information. But if they select subgroups that have very small representation in our school community, I suppose that it would be possible for them to boil down the possible students to their smallest.
How would responses to the, those open-ended questions be handled if they name names or give very specific information or details about staff or students or anybody else?
So the administrators are the only people who see the full survey data. When names are used, we redact those names. If the identifying situations are so specific as to identify enough information so that a student or another member of the building level climate committee could figure out an identity, we would of course redact that information. We try and provide as much information to the building level climate committee as possible so that they can really study the experiences of students, staff, and parents, and then come up with action plans to address the areas of need. And I will say that in years of looking at the responses, there are many times where students, staff, and parents name names. And so when we go through that, we take it very seriously. And so to the extent that administration needs follow-up on something, so for instance, if a student discloses a possible bullying incident, then we'll do our best to investigate if enough information is given. And then another case, it's we redact the school purpose committee's, like, community names.
So my understanding is that there's a bullying report that can be built out anonymously or you can give your name. And if it's submitted anonymously, it is typically not acted upon because it is an anonymous report. And this sounds like, in the case of this survey, even though it might be anonymous, you potentially would act on it and address issues if specific names were named. Is that?
In both situations, the reports are active. So if a student, staff member, or parent submits a bullying report and provides us enough information so that we can act and investigate, then we will certainly do so. So just because it's anonymous doesn't mean that we're not going to act on the commission. All right? So if someone provides a report that is so general that it's very difficult to investigate, then they may have a hard time.
A couple of questions to our county's team, so is if then it's active, but the requires, how is that communication back or is it, you know, what's the appropriate communication back to the reporting reporter, if you will? So the person who filled out that form, say they advanced an issue with regard to someone else, then we'd have to add what reporting, what's the reporting that came back without protecting the identities of both the reporter and the reported one?
Well, it all depends on the, if, so if the person who submits the report is either the complainant, the parents of the complainant, or potentially the person who's being accused of the inappropriate behavior, then those people would be contacted directly. If it's, "I'm a parent and I was at this event, this school-sponsored event, and I observed some behavior, and these are the kids that I recognize," we would investigate, but we're not going to make contact with that parent and say, "This is what we've discovered about these other students who are not your child, and this is how we're taking the action." That would be, you know.
So just again, I don't want to go into a whole agenda item about the climate study. So maybe it's best that, this is going to be administered when?
They began actually this week.
Okay, so maybe next month, when we do our deep dive into academic performance, we can also share survey results and then board members can ask questions. Not survey results, survey.
I did share the questions with you.
Not, we don't want answers, we want just general data on the survey.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share the questions with you.
Appropriate data on the survey.
I can share the results in June, but it typically takes some time for us to do that.
I just think we can ask those questions unless somebody has anything.
Is it an opt-out survey or is it mandatory?
It's not mandatory, it's absolutely not. The students are provided time to take it and they may take it or not.
And are the questions based on the same questions from the previous year so that we'll be seeing historical trends? Or they, it's a late, maybe set of questions?
They're in the same category. So the categories I shared with you have remained constant over the last decade. Sometimes we eliminate questions when it seems that the data that we get from the responses is just not actionable, so there might be minor changes. So to the extent that a question is stable, yes, we can see historical trends. So I'll give you an example of a stable question. It might be, "There is a trusted adult, I, there is at least one trusted adult in this community to whom I can turn if I feel uncomfortable." It's an example of the type of, of a stable question. Or, "I feel, I feel safe in the following settings in the school community." And that's the question we ask every, every year.
And then were the questions purchased from a national organization? Does this kind of survey, because I think we've talked about that in the past.
We talked about that a lot last year, yeah.
It was differently.
It was our desire actually to purchase this survey, but in my research, looking into the organizations, the organization that's used most commonly by districts in our area is in the process of changing their question sets. So it hasn't been one situation, that's in fifteen. So if we purchased that survey, it would have caused, for all three districts, a total of ten thousand dollars. And we would not have had that momentary of this year and they were going to change all of the questions for the next year. So it just didn't seem like the right year to make that change because we wouldn't even then be able to compare this year with prior years because of new, a new set of questions or this year to next year. So we thought it was best to hold off and consider that possibility for next year. We know that the analysis is more challenging, especially when we ask so many questions because it's a more labor-intensive quality review. And at the same time, what we've heard from parents, students, and some staff is that they don't necessarily feel that all voices are being heard. And there's a concern that we need to provide opportunities for people to tell us about their experiences. So by asking, by providing an option for people to give more information in those open-ended questions, that's your answer.
And then where were the sources for the new questions coming in? You said it was from the building's climate committee?
The building climate committee at Barlow in particular has a very active student participation. And so those students, in particular the students who participate with the youth mental health first aid, wanted us to ask some more questions so that they could be purposeful in their work with their, with their goal services. So I'd be happy to share those questions with you and also highlight any that were changed from the question.
Just a question about the opt-out. Now, moving into our school, parents opt their children out of any surveys, there's a box. Will those students not, we give them the survey in wellness or their advisory based on that opt-out?
If the parents have opted the child out of all surveys, then certainly. This is a survey that is completely optional. It is completely optional, period. So even if the parents have not opted them out of surveys, any student can, can, we choose not to do so. But if the parent has opted out, the student will not receive the survey in that class and they will not receive this.
Okay, so if we're going to ask any more questions, I'm going to look for a motion to add an agenda item, complicated to climate survey. Otherwise, I'm going to respect the, as that we defer until we have a future meeting. Okay, are there any other administrative reports? Hearing none, I move us on to item seven. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess into executive session for performance review of the JVHS head of school and invite Dr. Jason McKenna. Does anyone want to make that motion? Okay, did he get it? Just make sure that's there. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so I think we're going to recess into that little dark room there. One of them, if we can get in, Brian? And for members of the public watching us on TV and staff members here, our anticipation it will be not a long session. But then again, at eight thirty-seven, thank you for your patience. We move on to item eight, which is our discussion of possible action items, Lushy. Item A is the JVHS head of school contract. And so would someone like to make, would someone like to move that the Region Nine Board of Education approve the contract of employment of Assistant Superintendent Head of School Marielle, Dr. Marielle Hamada, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school years as presented and authorize the board chairperson to sign the document subsequent to board council review?
To make that motion?
No, there's second. Brian?
And why could you email that motion?
I, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no discussion, I will detail that as with all public contracts, the terms are online for anyone who's interested in the public. So with that, is there any further discussion or comments? The last comment I will say is, thank you, Dr. Hamada, for getting us through this year and for all you've done for our students and our building. And we're very much, very pleased with all you have done here. So.
Something coming to work tomorrow.
Well, we haven't, well, you know, so.
I shouldn't wait, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, with that, all in favor? Any opposed? Yes, certainly. So it's unanimous. And again, thank you, thank you for all you've done. We're glad, thank you.
I'm honored, thank you.
Okay, that brings us on to item B, which is legal call for the district meeting. Now, there's a couple of these floating around. I didn't put one on everybody's desk. I have to wait till the end or I'll leave the whole on. There's a couple of these floating around. This is a legal requirement. We have to post a legal notice, a legal call for the district meeting into the publications, the papers. We put it in the Connecticut Post and in the damn RAVMIS Times to get the circulation for the two towns. And so this is the legal call. There are copies up there, I can pass it around. Probably too lengthy to read it. This legal call comes straight from board council. That's something, I'll detail it in a minute, that we did a lot of work to make sure that all of our procedures and practices and all of our documents relating to the referendum are appropriate, best practice. So given that, does someone want to move that the Region Nine Board of Education accept the legal call for the May second, twenty twenty-two annual district meeting as presented? Are there any questions, discussions, or on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? So it's unanimous. I'm going to put that in front of me again. So I just wanted to make a sort of a point of order notification for the public, which is that Section ten dash fifty-one A provides that the Regional Board of Education and not the town vote to approve the call of the annual meeting and referendum vote. Board council was contacted to review the Region Nine practices and procedures related to legal compliance for the annual district hearing, the annual district meeting, and the referendum. Council provided recommended wording for the legal call, which was sent to both towns on April sixth. Town of Reading printed ballots reflected, reflecting their preferred wording that they had used for many years, which did differ from the question submitted by Region Nine. And state statute requires uniformity of the posted legal call with a question that's actually on the ballot. So I just, I wanted to point that out, that, you know, what happened was the region then chose to align our question on the legal call with Reading for this election cycle and that decision was made in order to avoid reprint, reprinting the ballots at the taxpayers' expense. But I did want to create an awareness and state that we are hopeful that the legally submitted question from Region Nine appears on the ballot of both towns in the next election cycle. Now, to relieve any fears that you may say, you know, wonder, is it legally compliant? It's legally compliant, the question, the way the towns have written it in the past. However, it does not reflect the recommended wording from board council. And again, my opinion is that if you're hiring someone to provide a service and they're an expert in the field, that's really the recommendation that you should follow. However, again, to avoid reprinting of ballots and to, you know, get us through this election cycle, it's still absolutely legally compliant. But again, I just wanted to create that awareness to everyone.
Does the legal call differ between Reading and Easton?
No, I made sure that, that, Easton, you know, it was strange, they held back on printing the ballots because of the Easton town meeting last night. They wanted to make sure they got through that before they printed them, whereas Reading had gotten out in front and printed theirs right away. So Easton has been made aware of the question as in our legal call, so they will all align. But again, that's really essential for any legal challenges, that the call and the question on both ballots are the same.
Were there any questions that were raised by either town, some of them all, you know, understand what you just described and, but, you know, in the future year, the next year will conform the word.
But, you know, in the future year, the next year will conform the wording that the natural council said?
I haven't received word that next year it will all be the same. I just wanted to create that awareness to everyone so that everyone knew that that was our plan. Okay? Okay, that brings us on to item C, which is our policy review and discussion. And number one is the second reading to repeal face mask coverings policy fifty-one forty-one point eight. And as you all recall, that was something that we presented for first reading at the last joint meeting of the boards, or our individual meeting within the joint meeting of the boards. And so now it is here for second reading. And so again, I don't know if anyone wants to make a motion to move for second reading at the Region Nine Board of Education repeal policy fifty-one forty-one point eight face mask coverings. Is there a second? Okay, are there any questions, discussions, or a motion on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, that brings us to item two, which I am going to respectfully request that we table item two. And I know I didn't get a chance to speak with the policy committee. They had a meeting immediately before this one via Zoom. And the reason, there's a couple of reasons, a couple of thoughts. And then I'm gonna ask Sarah to kind of share the work of the committee, because they have done a lot of work since. With board council, it's really best practice and appropriate for policies that are going to be adopted and policies that are going to be repealed, to be listed in the board packet with links to those policies. And not just for board members, but for members of the public, so that members of the public want to, you know, look through those policies and have the same opportunity that the board does to kind of review and comment on those policies. So I, I think we were hopeful that we were going to get across the finish line on the twenty-sixth. I know that the committee has worked hard towards that endeavor. And again, I appreciate that work. And so the question relates to, and again, I'll let you speak to the work of the committee, but is, is the committee confident that, I'm gonna pull my calendar up. So is the committee confident that by May sixth, which is a week from this Friday, we can have submitted to the superintendent a list of all of the policies recommended for repeal and all of the policies recommended for adopt? And if we are, then that would, that gives the superintendent a week to kind of prepare the documents in a way that would be appropriate. And also, you know, again, our hope was to do it tonight. We tried our best, you know, and we did a lot of work. And I know the committee worked over the weekend, and I do want to express my appreciation for that because, you know, we do appreciate your hard work. I just want to make sure that, I think what's essential is that we get all of the, my individual opinion would be that we get the policy work done prior to the summer so that in the summer, we are just looking at any updated policies or, you know, any revisions that come from shipment and goodwin. And this is a little different because I think we were heading towards having some done for first reading tonight and some done for first reading at another meeting. So what I'm presenting is one shot, all of the ones that we're gonna do for repealing and for adopting by a week from Friday. And the question is, is that something that we feel confident that we can do in order to be able to present it in a way that we've been recommended by council? And so with that, that's just my, so I do want to let Sarah speak to the work of the committee and how it's going, and then we'll kind of revisit this.
Sure. And then while I speak to the process of how things have been going, if you can think about the responses and the timeframe and all of that and lay in on that.
So I'll back up a little bit. What we've been doing for the past few months really has been to go through shipment and goodwin's policies, but breaking things down week by week, every Friday, just to get through the chunks. And we've made it through. It was fairly simple. We were happy with the process. I mean, everyone is fairly aligned on everything across the board. So it was a nice collaborative process. And we knew that the harder part was going to be getting to our own policies. And then what do we do with those? Are we gonna be ready to replace them and just go with shipment? And so what we have found is that for the majority, yes, we're ready to move forward. There were some questions we had, and we wanted to come in front of shipment and have them be a part of our meeting, and so they attended last Friday. What happened was they, they heard our concerns on a few of the policies, like minor things, tweaks to wording, grammar suggestions, things that we noticed that were unique and distinct to our districts. And we wanted them to have some time to think the thinking through and come back to us. So just yesterday, we received a response. And although it was lengthy, we could still make it through, but the three of us then hadn't had a chance to even discuss their response. So today, we wanted to come to you and say, here's everything we've got, but we didn't have a chance to even talk about their response to us until tonight at 5:00 P.M. So we worked feverishly to get through. And I think you'll be happy to hear that as of today, we have a list of about forty policies that we are ready to move forward on. Now, that being said, there were some things that still needed some clarification and that we wanted to just brainstorm together and hash out a little bit and talk about some of the nuances that are a little bit trickier. You know, one of the policies we have currently allows students to opt-in, whereas shipment and goodwin outlines in their policy and opts out. So there's nuances like that that we need to talk about, and especially with their response that we just received yesterday. How do we move forward? Are we ready to do this? Do we do it as is, the way that we had been moving? Or do we want to switch and use their method? So there's a few of these things we still need to go through. I would like to hear from the two of you, what do you think about the timeframe, so far?
Well, based on shipment and goodwin's email that we received yesterday, they have not replied to all of our questions yet, and they asked for a part time. So I think we need to follow up with them and to meet this May six date, to get everything to Dr. McKenna. They will need to confirm that they will give us answers well before the sixth so that we can then go through them and finish them after. I think if shipment and goodwin is commits to giving us answers more quickly than they said they were able to in their email, I think that the May sixth date for Dr. McKenna is doable. We're very, we're very close.
Just, just to, like I said, just to throw out some numbers here. We started with, we, the three of us as well as the joint policy committee, so that's just our given constant. We started with eighty-three shipment policies, right? And so we all read every single one of them and bucketed it into five categories, if you will. And the majority of those, I'm gonna say roughly fifty, were, we can move those forward. And then there were sub-buckets of, we had questions. They could, to Sarah's point, they arranged, maybe found this typo, quick clarification. And then there were things like FERPA, opt-in, Title IX, where, or I think one we just recently passed a, less than a year ago, where we said, okay, this is complicated. Transfers, where we want to align across all the districts, but we knew it was gonna be kind of an extracted or extended discussion, if you will. And so there are sub-buckets of this eighty-three that we're gonna table for various reasons, right? So let's just call that about twenty. And so, but there's roughly fifty that we're gonna advance in some fashion. And then, and then, just to get the level set, the existing number of policies that Region Nine has right now, if you don't include the bylaws, it's a hundred and ninety. So we went through a mapping of the eighty-three against the one ninety. And the numbers that Sarah and Kathy are talking about, we're ready to bring forty tonight to the board to say, of these forty, these are just, they don't even exist. They need to exist for purposes of statute in Connecticut. And then the remainder will be, can be easily replaced, can replace something we have in place that's outdated and will have more updated regulations. So there's a good number that we can advance. But what I wanna, what I wanna, I'm sharing this detail because I want to level set expectations that the board may have of these, where we need to talk about some of this stuff. So that's roughly, let's just call it twenty to thirty of the eighty. So just to kind of, so this May deadline, whatever that may be, absolutely advance multiple. How much of the contentious stuff do you, does the board want to talk about? Or are you okay with this bucket of fifty or, or so?
So, yeah, so just to jump in, my understanding is that a lot of the mapping that you guys are spending a lot of time doing, which is great, Dr. McKenna can do that mapping as long as he gets them by the sixth, he can do them in advance of our meeting on the seventeenth. So that.
I think it's done, it's done.
Well, okay, so, so that's one thing.
We're all set. We wanted it to be prepared for today so that way if you did go home to review and read, you had old and new.
Understood.
You could have a side-by-side comparison.
Understood, and that's great, and thank you. So I guess what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that, my understanding from the policy committee meeting is that Eastern is gonna move forward with a first reading on their, their May meeting, which would be the tenth. So they're actually gonna beat us somewhere logically, but they're, anyway, they're gonna do it on the tenth, okay? What I'm, what I'm asking is that if we can all come to an agreement that the workload, the bulk of the policy work for this year needs to kind of taper down for the summer. And so what I'm asking is that if we're gonna be stuck where there's, I don't know if it's twenty, whether it's thirteen, whatever policies that we can't get to because shipment doesn't have a comparable policy, or it's unique to our district, or there's some other challenge that makes it really difficult to, to resolve at this time, can we get to a point where we have all of the policies that we want to adopt and we have all the policies that we want to repeal? And then we can also have that list of the ones that we're going to retain? And then agree that rather than holding every Friday policy meetings, at that point, they will go to where, when policy meets to review new policies from shipment and goodwin or revisions. And in the meantime, you can be brainstorming and working on how to solve these. I guess my concern is that I, what I've said since the beginning is I, I'm mindful of administrator time and I want them to be able to focus on the other needs of the district, which there's a lot of work to do in other areas. So, so again, it's not like I'm trying to, you know, push this thing, you know, forward when it's not ready. That's why I'm suggesting we take a step today back and say, rather than do it forty, which we might not do the right way, and then come next meeting with twenty more, ten more. Let's, let's try to get it so that we, the, we, the committee can come to us with a recommendation and say, here are the twenty-five, or thirty-five, or fifty-five that we're recommending we adopt. Here are the seventy that we're gonna repeal. Here are the thirteen that we're still working on. And also giving the assurance that by adopting these additional policies, all of our policy manuals legally compliant and up to date, while there are still, there's still work there, we, we're not putting the administration in a position where we don't have policies we need. We're, we're, again, in a better place. I just don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, you know, I just.
Totally understand, yeah, we're right there with you.
And so if, I just would, you know, if we, like I said, I don't want to say this and then you guys think that there's no way we can do that by the sixth. If, if there's no way we can do it by the sixth, then I think we need to come up with a plan B where we get you additional help, that whatever we need to do, because I do think we need to get there by the sixth. So again, just, it's, it's, I know I'm leading you, but it's, it's a question and a.
Do you think the sixth is doable on our end? My concern is actually the shipment and goodwin. The last email that we received said we would be happy to review in the next couple of weeks the additional.
I have that email, right? And, and if you could detail those questions, I will, I will get you the answers. I don't want to sound, you know, but we'll get you the answers.
Sorry, those answers to those questions, though, require deliberation by committee, right? So, so let me just try to think of one, Kathy, Sarah, help me out, right? Because where, you know, even just, I'm making a vague example, but where, once they give us the answer, we went through today, once they give us the answer, we're like, well, wait a minute. I remember when I read that policy two weeks ago, we had this question come up, you know, how do you apply, say contiguous district, for example, in terms of policy? That was one I came up with. And that one, I want to be very clear that the policy is clear, that, you know, we don't have an obligation, we're not putting the board an obligation to say, now you've gotta pay for any policy that's in the surrounding towns. So there are things like that, some of the questions that we asked shipment, that they answered. We were able to close those out, but there's still some others that, again, gets us into this, maybe it'll end up being part of twenty that don't advance. So that's kind of where, I want the committee to be very clear about what the board as a whole, what its expectations is in terms of what this number is, right? Do we want to, I mean, we can bucket the whole eighty-three and map those to one ninety. But that's, the caveat is gonna be, then some of them are gonna fall in this punt category, if you will. And if, and if the board is fine with that, then absolutely so am I. And then that will be then a discussion for the summer or, you know, it's settled. So it's certainly the intent of the committees to maximize and make this most efficient. And I think, I hope the administration will agree with us, that heavy lifting, at least from a weekly meeting perspective, lifted from the board members. And I hope we haven't taxed the administration too much. But definitely I just wanted to clarify what this expectation is regarding to number, although generally aligned with what we just talked about.
Okay, so I did read the email, and some of those questions seemed like they were, they were there. Like the question of opt-in and opt-out was, we can do opt-out, it's, it's less restrictive. We've been doing opt-in because of operational preference. So again, we can certainly make it more restrictive. And that's easy to just, you know, communicate with the administration as to whether they can, they prefer to do it the way we've been doing or change. And I think the contiguous one was also explained that it's just a different way of saying that we're not obligated to the students outside of the town. But if you send me a list of specific questions, not that they should respond to me any differently than they are to you, but I will express an urgency that we don't have a couple of weeks. And, you know, to Cheryl's point, I guess that's your, your role on the, on the policy committee is that I think that we want to be legally compliant. We want to have model policies that reflect the recommendations of our council. We're going to have unique policies that we're going to have challenges with. And if you determine that that's ten, or that it's twenty, or whatever, and that's where we land, and then I think that's where we land and we have that discussion moving forward, if that needs to come back to the Board and, you know, for the next time we do this. But I think for now, like I said, the goal really is to get, get to a landing spot and do that before the summer. And as long as that's something that we're confident that we can do, and just, you know, like I said, send me the questions and I'll follow up with them as you, you know, keep, don't work with them, I'll have them send everything to you. But like I said, appreciate the work, appreciate the effort to try and get there. I know it's difficult, but really, again, we just, we need to find that landing spot and agree that we can do that, otherwise we have to figure out a way to get there so that we can kind of-
Mike, can I ask you, why, why the sixth, why not the seventeenth for the next meeting?
Because Dr. McKinnon needs to do the prep work on the document and whatever preparation-
Before we get on the-
Before we get it, yeah. So he needs a week. So, you know, if you, if you, if you look at it, the other thing that I'm realizing is that he has a Board meeting for each Board every week, too, and I think he's going to get, you know, questions from Easton, he's going to get stuff from Renning, you know. I don't want to jam him up and send it to him, you know, on the thirteenth, because that gives him four days. And, you know, so that's where the sixth comes from. To give him a little bit of a landing spot and-
Sure, and just to give you some more quick feedback, from the Shipman and Goodman policies, the way that we've kind of broken them down currently, might have adjusted a little bit since, you know, months ago when we first met and Dr. McKinnon outlined the memo that he had used at Oxford School. Things might have shifted a bit. So what we see now coming out of the Shipman and Goodman model policies are an adopt grouping, a reject grouping, and then one more for revise. Small revisions, but there's things that, like, we've already sent to Shipman and Goodman. What do you think about this? Oh, and they just started to email us back. Yes, we can make that adjustment. You're right, that makes the most sense for you all, things like that. So when they get back to us with that adjustment or their revision, that's on them. So I feel confident that we can get the rest. And then if that, let's say the revise options come sometime in the summer, I don't know, but-
Then we do it in the summer, when we do the other ones.
We can do our bucket of the things that we're ready to move forward in. And if there's things that aren't burning down the house, right, we're okay, we've got some stuff that we could use for the intro, that's fine, right? And that way we're not doing a whole ton of stuff over the summer. But there are the Region Nine policies that we think fall into two categories, maintain, and so there will probably be a decent number. And then the replace, which we've already outlined, what are the replace ones that we want to use? So replacing them with Shipman, and those are the ones we had ready for you today. So I do feel fairly confident that we're going to be in a good place come May sixth, on our account. We'll see what Shipman can do. If we get the majority, bulk majority of this done before the summer, awesome. If there's some that we have to wait on and we come back to early fall, I think we're going to be in a good place. And I don't think it's going to have to be like weekly meetings at that point. Shipman has also told us that in July, they're getting, at the bare minimum, four new policies that we are going to have to take on and accept. They're going to be mandatory from the state. So they know this stuff is coming, so I'm sure we'll start hearing about them.
I would just add to that, Shipman has about eighty policy, and we have almost a hundred and eighty policies in place. So part of what we also need to do is recommend which ones, which of those policies that aren't being replaced by Shipman policy need to stay, as Sarah said, be maintained. But potentially, many of them can be renewed, new policy, for example. So that would be part of the recommendation, because our goal is to reduce the number of policies overall and based on the Shipman and Goodman model policies, that's very possible.
Okay, so then, can I ask a question, just about that? Will you have the repeal list by May sixth, okay?
Of our existing, of the Region Nine existing policies?
Yes, same here.
Well, that's why I erase it, because that's-
You said, you maintain or replace, but then, as you said, there are more.
There are some that we, I believe we will recommend to repeal.
Right, so I guess the question that I would have to add to that is, if there are a hundred and eighty, okay, and we've already done the mapping that we've eliminated a certain number of them, right? Can you also send me the list of the remaining ones? Well, rather than, I'll ask it in the form of a question, would it be helpful if you sent me the list of the remaining ones and I sent that to Shipman and Goodman to look at and say, this one you don't need, that one you don't need, this one you don't need, this one you need to keep? Would that be helpful? Is that something that the committee is beyond the committee because you don't know the legalities of it? Or is it more that they're just, they need more work that you can do and so it's not helpful to do it?
I think it's more the latter. I mean, you know, and I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think, me personally, there are so, yeah, getting to know the glory of the policy, the detail, and I feel like to have another intermediary might muddle the process. I'd rather, I think, I'm the older one, so it's better for me to kind of go through the detail and get through that. I don't necessarily think, I appreciate that offer, it's very helpful to facilitate. I think something might get muddled, particularly in the policies where there could be an impact to, I'm always worried about families that have multiple kids and multiple business buildings, so I'm worried about that kind of impact by just having somebody that's not working on the committee detail policies kind of happening. But I do appreciate that.
What if you just got to receive the rubric, like the last list that you received, which basically says mandatory, not needed, or whatever?
Best practice.
Would that kind of be something that would help? As you're going through those, that you can say, it's not needed, but I like this policy or we feel we need this policy for this reason, but at least you know it's not required? Or you know that, yes, it's mandatory, you need something on this, and so you have to keep looking at it and doing it?
I think it could be helpful, but I will say that I think what's mandatory, it would already be on their list.
Well, I agree, so that-
Yeah.
But I guess, what I'm saying is, yeah, so-
So then it could be-
How do you get through the fifty that are left? I just don't want you to get kind of mired down where we have fifty that we don't need, but we can't get through them.
No, I think that's a good point. And what we already noticed is there's a certain number of Shipman policies that have one policy, or we have five. So we're going to see that that being part of the shit, right?
Yeah, and Dr. McKinnon had said this before, which is, again, I'm happy to bring Gwen here, for her to say, you have five, you don't need these five. In fact, these five actually hurt you. You're better off to have this one simple one that we have for this reason.
Yeah, I think we're past that. I think we're done.
Even when you made that analysis, yeah.
But then how do we still have twenty-five that-
The ones that don't have the corresponding Shipman policies. So those remaining ones, that's-
But they're policies that we have, that they don't have a corresponding policy to, which means their opinion is that you probably don't need it, or they would have a policy for it. And so, would it be helpful to bring them here and find out why it's not helpful? Or are we just going to keep the ones that we may not need because we've had them for all this time? I don't understand. In other words, if we're cleaning it up, are we cleaning it up? Or is it, is it too difficult to figure out which ones, do you want to keep them, which one you don't? Or is it just a matter of doing the work?
No, I think it's just because we've been solely focused on Shipman and Goodman up until this point.
Right.
Now that we're completely through that, we can set our sights on the remaining Region Nine policies. And I think that's it. We can easily start categorizing them into the replace, or replace these with Shipman. Done, put them in a bucket. Then we can put in a bucket of the ones that we're maintaining. And then there's going to be the question marks. So I think those question marks, I'd be happy to combine those in a list, and those are the ones that Shipman reviews quickly for us and says, nope, they're good to go, you can get rid of these, you know, longer. Or actually, we see this working for your district, hold on. You know, so I think that that could definitely help, but I think we need to go through that list first and categorize, and then we can send it.
Okay.
Just, I don't want to speak for the committee either, but to that question about the, there are a large number of Region Nine policies, that there is no Shipman, for example, live animals in classrooms. Shipman and Goodman does not have a policy for that. And we could ask Shipman, Goodman has a question, but potentially, we have their mandatory list, we have their best practices list. We have, I believe, have covered all of those policies. So potentially, we could say, we're going to adopt these policies, we are going to-
I know. I was just going to say, open your ears.
It also seems like a building level rule, right, if in a district-
Sorry, Kathy, we're joking, I can't hear you.
Rain, no shock.
You're exactly right, like, it took us, you know, a lot of time to get around. But I think, and I don't know if everybody's comfortable doing this, because like I said, there is a comfort level, but I'm raising it again because we can start fresh and then add back instead of try to figure out what we need, what among ourselves, or what Shipman's input, what we want to repeal or remove.
So that's a different approach.
It's not the one we've been, and I, I know you've said this for the last however many months, and thank you for saying that, but it took, I think it took, you know, it's a group of people and where everybody's trying their best to get through it, and sometimes you have to do it yourself to get to the right place. And I think you said that as well, so thank you. But I'm just offering that up as a, and I don't want to speak to the committee, but I think that, given now what we've been through and what we understand, that's, people may have a better comfort level of that at this point.
Okay, so we could talk around this issue probably all evening, but, so, are we, are we comfortable moving forward with the agreement that we'll try to get everything to Dr. McKinnon by May sixth? And that will be a hard stop landing point for us? And then if we need to do further work or further look at it, and to Cathy's point, you know, maybe at some point we have a meeting and we bring Gwen in and she can look at the twenty we have left and tell us all, keep this, get rid of that, or whatever, if that's useful as well. But I guess, you know, just being able to become legally compliant with everything and get us to the spot where Dr. McKinnon is comfortable, we're in a general agreement that we will get there on May sixth, or work us to get there.
We've clarified that, so what are we, options, as you're saying?
Well, so what, yeah, what are we committing to on the sixth?
There are lots of options, they're all good. Appreciate all the work the committees did, but what are we going to deliver?
So I, again, I don't want to speak to the committee, but what we talked about was a list of all the policies that we're recommending to adopt, right? A list of all the policies that we're recommending to repeal, right?
Yep.
Well, yeah, repeal is, so to adopt, repeal, and then the third category is ones that we will be retaining, recommending to retain. And within that category of recommending to retain, whether or not there are modifications that are done within, you had mentioned that there were some policies that you were going to, you already had them looking at to kind of tweak or whatever. But then again, so that would be what would be delivered on the sixth. The variable comes in as to how many policies are in that retained category? And do you need them all, and can you get to them all? And so, again, my suggestion was that we could get some guidance on those if you want, but if the preference is that you don't want it-
I'm sorry, if the objective is to get them into the retained bucket and then work through that bucket, if they come on the sixth, if there are forty in the retained that we still need to work our way through, is that sufficient? Or are we asking if they work through all the forty that are in the retained bucket by the sixth?
Yeah, I don't think they can work through the retained bucket by the sixth, which is why I was suggesting-
We just need them in the buckets, they can start working for whatever's in the retained. Work that list down as much as they can by the sixth. But on the sixth, we'll say, use it with forty or whatever, the five that are left. And then we need to continue to investigate and try to close out.
Yeah, to Todd's point, that's exactly what I'm looking for, is in that retained bucket, there's going to be a punt, meaning, you know, we're not, there's two levels to that. This policy is good, it's current, we can move forward with it, no changes needed. There's that kind of retained, but there's a retained because it's going to require deliberation by the respective parties and with true thought was as to the implications for all three districts. So that's kind of what I would say retained, what defer, and kind of what we call, like, we just had a meeting today, table. You know, table because it's going to require discussion as to, forget about the, you know, whether or not we want to change our policies based on what the current reg or best practice is. Because it's for the best practice, it's not required, but it's a best practice. So that's where the deliberation requires, so that would be the kind of retained and defer.
So we would have some subcategories, to play back to Cathy's, if it's the animal policy, and it ends up in the retained bucket, but it's a different type of retained because Shipman model policy doesn't have, and we don't know what to do with it yet, we haven't had time to figure it out. It still could get repealed if we don't need it, but we still need to investigate it.
Yep.
Make a decision. So we'll have some kind of subcategorization in the retained, based on the research we've done.
But the buckets, for sure, that, I hope, again, I don't want to speak to the committee, but from my perspective, that's substantially done already. So it's really just, there's going to be this kind of ambiguous group that's going to be required in the work, whatever we need, retain, defer.
So just, then, plan for, sorry, then, plan it forward, though, the ones that are in the bucket, the ones that we all agree and say we can do these, we can put those on first reading? And the ones that we're saying that are in the bucket, they can be repealed, put those on first reading?
Yes. Present them for first reading and May, yes.
The ones that can be replace the bars?
Well, in any of them that were, so there's no replace. It's either adopt and it's repeal, or it's retain, right? So replace, it's not a replace swap, it's you're getting rid of one and you're adopting the other one that's replaced.
Correct, yes.
But, yes, just so that we do it that way. And so, and that's fine, this is, you know, again, if everyone is in general agreement of this, this is fine. I, again, individually feel like we've gone through this exercise, if there are forty left that we don't need, that Shipman says we don't need, I would just assume, that's me personally.
But we can make that decision.
You can do it down the line and we can go through this all the next year again. I just, I would really like to do it-
We'll know how much is left, what that set is.
Whether it's forty, or it's seventy, or it's ten, right?
And then we can work through that.
That's what I see. Again, that's fine, I just, yeah, as long, yeah.
And I'd rather, you know, start adopting, start that process going, right? And the May meeting, as opposed to wait until we work that forty bucket down.
Us too, I still agree, we want to leave it there. Especially the ones we do not have at all.
But the forty, the forty bucket to retain really doesn't affect your adopting, because there's nothing to adopt that corresponds with that, you know.
You said, you said, you should do it in chunks and-
No, 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 I want to adopt everything and repeal everything. My only difference is I'd like to get rid of ones that we don't need quicker, but I like- I like Kathy's approach, get rid of them all and bring them back to ones that you need, but again, that's individual perspective, this is the, as long as we can get to where it's adopt, repeal by May 6th, are we kind of okay with that?
I, I think it's manageable and that we both agree, I think that's, that's possible. And, you know, we need to get shipments input on the review policies by that date, so we just need to get that done. I would want to ask, we were talking through this today, when we get to you, at what point do we number the policies? Because the shipment policies, is that what you would do, or do you want us, or are you expecting numbers? Because the shipment policies are 1,000 series with a policy name, not 1,001, 1,002. So that's your mapping exercise from the 6th and the 17th, just to confirm so we get you the right things?
Well, in my previous district, we didn't number, we just, we had them in a series and we named them.
Okay.
So again, that's really a preference.
Right.
Your policies, if you want to number them, number them, if you don't want to number them.
Yeah. I just, whether you, whether you are called, whether you're using adopt, revise, or reject, or whether you're using maintain or replace, whatever the criteria is, I just need that mapped out. And then, once we know what those policies are certain, we can sort them into Google folders, we can create an appendix in the list, so that when you come on the 17th, you have a motion that directs people where to go to, to study the policies in detail for the purpose of first reading. And then we will change, insert the blank, right? So we'll put the right district's name in, we will, you know, we will remove the shipment header, we'll, we'll put it in the Region 9 header, like we'll do all that.
Or you say we?
The administration.
Okay.
So we, we already have to that, we just, we already have the, we had drafted motions for tonight, along with a bucket of like 15 that we were going to say adopt, and say 30 that we're going to say adopt, replace, or adopt, repeal, whatever wording we want to do.
Yeah.
So we can share that, I think we already shared it with the board and the field. So that would be the basis, but we can update that further, and we have a whole Excel spreadsheet of that, and all that stuff, so let us know if there are any issues stuck there, but if there are any any format, we can work with that.
Okay.
So essentially, you can start reviewing, but it's already been done before.
I mean, you can have weekends, you have free time.
No, no, but I just meant so you wouldn't end up with it all in a big chunk.
Well, to that point, there is, within that email, let's see, there's 13 policies that are adopted, and Joel currently has one, it's mandatory for shipment, that's adopted. So those are done, those aren't going to change. Those, the other piece in that email that everyone received tonight is adopt and repeal in matching, sort of matching Region 9 policies, those two sections are done.
Yeah, we just need the policies that you're certain about and the policies you're not certain about, and however you decide to map, whatever criteria you need, we just need that binary information. And then we can help you sort them into, we can provide the infrastructure for the process of that.
Well, we've been working off of a rule sheet that I think now we can, yes, make it much clearer, take out some of the notes and all that other, and reformulate the tabs so we can do that for you. So, right, adopt, that's that one, repeal, that's whatever, right? And so I think that now, over the next two weeks, we can get that done.
And then I would recommend that on this, on the 6th, Sarah, you and I meet as the chair of the subcommittee, and you can go over kind of what your work is without actually making it a meeting. We just, you and I, this is the process, this is the rule sheet, this is how you stream it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been limited to some boardrooms, any other boardrooms that have any comments or opinions, input? Hearing none, we will move on and again, thank you to the committee for their hard work and all their efforts, much appreciated, and thank you to Dr. McKinnon, because you're going to bring us over the finish line, so that's appreciated as well. Okay. We are on to, oh, hey, they're coming back to camera. We are on to item D, which is Mohegan Tribe $1,000 grant to the social studies program. And as you have seen in your board packet, that was a Mohegan Tribe Challenge Grant, $1,000. Oh, actually, it's a agreement of May, so it's a great thought. And so the intent of that grant is to be used for a field trip for the social studies class to the Tangjen Kejen Museum. Tangjen Kejen Museum. And so, should someone like to make a motion to move that the Region 9 Board of Education accept a Mohegan Tribe Challenge Grant for $1,000 to be used for a field trip to the Tangjen Kejen Museum with great appreciation? Unless you want to try and say Tangjen Kejen.
Someone can.
Here, is there a second, Sarah? Is there any discussion or comments on this? Yes, sir.
Just the way the board's listed out, that's how it is in the actual grant, it says funding of educational materials, and they're using it for a field trip.
It's for a field trip.
Yes, but the packet that we have is a letter, so the motion is different than what's in that letter.
I think the, the field trip falls under the category of educational materials, I think the education.
Just being clear, what this is, because in the letter it says the materials.
Was being overly specific.
Yeah. clarifying my intention.
Okay, any further comments on the grant as proposed? One in favor? It's unanimous, so our kids are going to Tangjen Kejen Museum, which is great. Okay. That brings us on to item E, which is the JBHS Water System Remediation Project. I will kind of give you a brief overview, I know everyone received in the board packet. Without detailing, overly detailing, obviously, there was a situation that occurred this fall with the water system. And so, the documents that you have are from both the state and our water service provider. Each district has a water service provider, it's mandatory by the state, and they're responsible for maintaining and testing our water system to make sure everything's compliant. So there is a proposal from our water system provider, and that is based on the recommended strategy by both, or procedure, processed by both the state and by the water system provider to kind of restore and reactivate our domestic water supply. So if you notice, the proposal is for $24,200, but there is a $2,000 contingency that's built into that proposal, that is based on variance of price of materials and unknowns. And so our water system provider has assured us that they will let us know in detail whether anything out of that, you know, needs to be used as well, but we felt it needed to be built into the price because, you know, from the data when the proposal is to run the work and be done, there's a big fluctuation in pricing of materials, and also because of the complicated nature of the restoration, there is the possibility that it could be other peripheral items that need to be replaced along the line. So he felt confident that the $2,000 would more than cover anything that could arise. And just again, for further clarification, it is, it's been articulated by both council and by Director of Finance that the expectation is that we will be reimbursed for this expense when this issue is brought to resolution. So even though we are, you know, initially outlaying that money, it is not the expectation that this is money coming out of our operating, you know, budget that's not going to be reimbursed. The expectation is that this is going to be reimbursed, just so that that's clear to everyone as well. So with that, I'll, I'll recommend a motion, maybe we can put on the floor and then we can discuss. Does someone want to move that the Region 9 Board of Education accept proposal 105870 from Water Systems Solutions and Design for an amount not to exceed $24,200 to restore and reactivate the domestic water supply at Joel Waller High School? Are they using that as a second?
A second one, sure.
Second one, Cheryl. Okay, floor is open to discussion. $24,200?
This is a proposal that invoice?
He wrote invoice on there, it's a proposal.
But it hasn't had a.
No, it hasn't.
I don't know this, I don't actually. Did I miss something?
Sometimes a lot of contractors have invoice warrants that they use for proposals as well. Usually they scratch it out and write proposals on it, but.
But it maybe happened in the.
No, it has not occurred yet.
I have the same question.
No, well, it's a good question, and so, no, that's not. Yes, much to jumpstart.
When would the work be?
The hope is to get this project completed before the end of the school year, like fairly quickly. It's, it's something that we feel needs to be done. I think it was articulated before that we're, we have water supply to the building, but we don't have the capacity that we had before the event. So we're running on variables, speed drive pumps, and we do have adequate water, but we don't have the same capacity that we, that we have originally. And so, again, that's.
That's my follow-up question, is this, is the learning work being done, is this weekend project any impact on the water system?
I would, I would say that knowing Dr. Almada, his, his way of operating would be that the school would not be down, that you can't legally operate the school while you don't have water, right? So there can be temporary disruptions, but I don't think the intent is that we're going to have no water for three days while this work is being done.
Just to touch this line of thinking, is there, if they start this project while school is in session, is there any chance that the children would, we'd have to close the school and there would be a day missed, which then is extending our school year and graduation dates and everything beyond June 21st?
There's zero chance we would do that. Absolutely, we would, we would not plan it that way. So the, the water system's already bypassed, so most of the work coming out of the storage tank, connecting the storage valves and piping to the variable drives can be done, it could be done tomorrow, with no interruption, it's just the final connection point that they would have to tie in and connect the two systems. And the only question I have is timeframe of testing, where they may have to flush everything and then get a, get a, get a possible test. So it could be done on, potentially could be done on a Friday afternoon and tested on it over the weekend and be back to, back to operation on a Monday.
Dr. McKinnon stole my thunder.
Yes, no, 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 it's fine, that, that, essentially that, yes, the majority of the work can be done separate from shutting down the school, it's, it's just that final connection crossover that you would need to do, that would impact disruption in service. And, and yes, to Dr. McKinnon's point, Ron Black, who's the owner of, you know, he's our water system provider, he's top in the state, he's, he's the, the expert on this, and he deals with numerous school districts, he's the one everyone consults, he's not going to shut us down in the middle of the day without order. And he will also, I'm sure, come up with a strategy for testing and making sure we're compliant at an optimal time that would have least impact on our school, so. And I'm sure Dr. McKinnon will be covering over his shoulder, making sure that we don't close school at all, because that's not our intent at all.
No, the only, the only thing we have to look at is the timing of the VOC test, getting the, the water quality test to the lab and getting the analysis back.
So what would be the contingency if we do this on Friday, we need the tests on Monday, we're needing the test results now, I basically contaminated the water at that point because we've got over.
Yeah, so here's what I would say, it's the same water, okay?
It hasn't been approved yet.
No, 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 I understand you have to test it, but what I'm saying is, you're, it's, it's the same, same water. If the water is tested regularly and it's compliant, right? And then you're just, you're, you're changing the way that it's delivered through the pumps, but it's still the same water, so yes, it has to be tested, but the likelihood that when you switch over, you're going to be, you know, non-compliant is very small, and I guess to your point then, you could, nothing has been disrupted, you could just switch it back and go back to the way we were doing it before.
And then if there's a delay in the testing, is there a contingency there?
Again, they, they, no, they do this all the time and they, they test, you know, they test all the time. Again, I will, I wanted to personally reassure everyone that this is not going to cause a disruption to, to school. If you want, we can bring Ron Black here to tell you how he does it, but this is, this is his field, we do this all the time.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just making sure we have some contingency in place if it's, we need to have bottled water or whether.
No, we did this before, right? We had no water, we brought a truck in and we hooked the, the pump to the truck, remember Dr. Almada?
Oh, don't put me in this.
That, that, that's, that's how it was done originally, they, they trucks it, there's always a contingency.
If, if there's, yeah, if there's.
You don't have to close the school because.
If there's any, if there's any doubt at all, you know, we can talk to Ron Black. I mean, the important part is you approve the project and the work, and if there's any doubt, we're beginning the VOC test, it was off getting back in time, and, and we would do it.
Going school in, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it's just to get it approved and get it going.
Do whatever the exams, I mean, exams are a couple, couple weeks in. I, personally, I don't want to have any bottled water, so, and I know we're being assured, Mr. Black is an amazing human being, I have all confidence, but, yeah, I don't want to go down that road again. I say we just wait till school's out and do what we got to do, but that's just my preference, because I don't want to take a chance, even for a day, that we're having that interruption.
And, and again, that's administrative prerogative, we're, we're not dictating when it happens, we're just approving that.
Is it to be done by the committee or can't be delayed, is there urgency on the timing? I mean, if we approve it.
I was, I was asked by the Director of Finance and Ops if we could get this thing moving, because right now, we're not at full capacity, okay? So if it's the preference of the administration to wait before we switch over, until after school is, has, you know, ended, that's certainly their, their prerogative. I guess what I'm saying is that a lot of this work can be done, you know, without any disruption, without doing anything, all this work can be done, and then if it's, you know, the, the desire of the administration, they wait until the switch over at once, you know, school's over.
My concern, like I said, you want to get dragged into this, but here we are. Last week, we were supposed to have. Last week, we were supposed to have a minor work done during our vacation week. And we ended up staffed home because what was supposed to be a very minor, quick little no water for 15 minutes, ended up to no fall anyone, being no water for the entire afternoon, everyone in the building. So that's my only fear. You're right, a lot of this stuff is just regular maintenance by a gentleman that doesn't sleep. However, I do not want to, even for a minute, be thinking, what if? So that's my concern, our concern.
What's that? Yeah, no, no, like I said, I think we're all saying the same thing. What I'm trying to articulate is that a lot of this work that's done is done before you even think about switching the water over, okay? So all of that groundwork can be done once we approve this. And again, the administration is going to determine at what point we do this switch over. And that's a prerogative and you can communicate with us and everything, but you know.
Remember those letters we sent out?
Yeah.
We'll do all of that.
Just going back to... I did read the minutes when we kind of discussed the three options a couple of months ago, right? This was kind of like that option we said where... At first I noticed that the new amount seems lower than the whatever was great. And then I think that... So this is more of an observation, so let me correct you if I didn't read that right. And then I think, I'm trying to remember what we discussed, that this may not be reimbursable, but now it sounds like it is for sure, which is also a good asset. That's been developing since the last time you talked about it, right? Because I thought it was somewhat ambiguous as this proposal we've been moving forward at the time was we may not get reimbursed about because we were going for more of a broader fix than what we originally created the issue in the first place. But I think it's great that we have reimbursed. I just wanted to clarify that understanding, because that's what I've been communicating.
No, and that's fair. I don't know whether the message was clear. I did not articulate the initial message. I think that there was some ambiguity as to we were calling some an upgrade and some was maybe... And again, this is not an upgrade. We had a certain system before that was compromised. We have a system that we're using now that's getting us through. It doesn't have the same capacity as the previous system. What we're proposing doing is the remediation that will restore that capacity to what you previously had. So it's not an upgrade, it's a remediation. And it is our expectation that we will be reimbursed. And I think actually, again, I think it's slightly higher priced now because...
But it's not the full, then this is kind of not mapping to whether...
No, I think we... There was part that we already did, that we've already paid for, that was that. So I think when you add them together, it's actually a little more expensive now. But things have changed with supply chain and labor force and everything, so prices have gone up.
Then from a budget perspective, we're okay, primarily the ability version?
Director of Finance has assured me that we're okay with this.
Okay.
Just to clarify, where is the reimbursement coming from? Is this source that blocks reimbursement?
I'm not at liberty to articulate that at this time, pending the possibility of legal. That helpful? But we are very confident based on... Twice the council.
Just one question, Sid.
Yes.
It should be the tank should be recommended? It should be additionally restricted with fencing? Is that something that we care before we do it?
I think you're reading the state letter that gave different options. I think if you look at the recommended approach, it doesn't require that.
Okay.
On communication, right? So what would be... I assume we communicate, because once we decide, you know, administration decides the timing of it, then that would be communicated to the families, either with... Even if we do it outside of, you know, the school year, is that correct?
Yeah. That's...
Sure, the thing is, yes. Because we would communicate, we would schedule and we would communicate that and then we'd follow up with an all-clear test indicated such and such. Here are the test reports.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. All in favor of the motion presented? Just going to hand this. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are on to item F. Which is Dr. Almada's.
Good evening. So I come to you today to ask that the board please consider Joel Barlow. It's a pilot open campus policy. We've been talking about this since I've arrived. Would students... Why now? Why this year? Why a pilot? Because I understand to make it a policy, it's going to take a lot more time. I wanted to do a pilot because of this particular clause. We have a few weeks left in the school year. Most of our seniors are 18. Most of our seniors can vote, go into the military, they cannot leave school. And there are times that they literally have three hours or more of non-class time just because the scheduling of this gave them back-to-back study halls. For example, a student has a lab and it doesn't meet on a certain day, might be back-to-back to a study hall or lunch or office hours. Literally, there's a handful of students that have a couple of hours. The students have requested, as many other high schools have a similar policy, not only during game, but just in this area. My previous school that had an open campus, not only for seniors, but juniors have not proposed a pilot. I am proposing again a pilot for this particular school year class. Get some research, see how it's gone. I know that last year we did it for different reasons, pandemic, we're charging students away. But this block scheduling that we've... That we have in place, and it's just a long amount of time for students to be sitting in a cafeteria, in a study hall. Students have been asking since day one. We sat down, we had a committee of them that was there, and we looked at everything from what other schools doing it, how they're doing. What are some of the things that have been worked last year? What are some of the things we would have to do? I think it's a fear request. We only have like six weeks, not even, by the time we put in exams and all that. Parents would have to approve. There would be... I provided a copy of a very similar form that we had last year. We're trying to get your approval. I'd like to send information out to the families. Families would have to grant permission. The students would like to start this possibly next week. It's a couple of days. The kids have been told it's coming. Be patient, be patient, be patient, be patient, be patient. I've been telling them for a long time. Winter was just a bad time to try a pilot program on these roads, so we waited in spring, or in May now, or we will be May next week. So we just want to see how it goes, collect some information, and get back to you guys. Maybe consider it down the road, do it something more permanent. But all I am requesting is that you please allow us to try this pilot program for the rest of the starting wayside, which will be Monday, for the rest of the school year. Just for the seniors. I've spoken to the seniors as far as something. And I said, don't ruin this for future classes, don't ruin it for you. The biggest negative from previous year, from last year, was that they were taking friends home in June, or girlfriends that were seniors, and all that nonsense. And I said, don't ruin it. If we're going to do this, and a lot of work by the possibility, that's the way I have to do it. And I think they'll honor that. They have to sign out the security at the front desk. We'll have a list of all the kids as this form is coming in electronically. They'll sign out. Right now, a parent calls a kid out anyway. Any of the parents who call students say, yeah, he needs to go wherever, I mean, we honor that. All we're asking for them to do is let them do it on their own, as seniors, as young adults, who literally in two months will be on the campus, in the college campus. I want to do a great way to, again, just prepare them for that. We were talking about we want to treat them like adults, we want to act like adults. But let's give them that one thing. And it's a privilege. It's a privilege that I can deserve and it's a privilege they've been asking for a long time. So that's my plea with the board. There are questions, feel free to ask.
Yeah, so again, it's on the agenda as a discussion, possible action. However, I'm not inclined to take a vote on this. I think this is something that is... It's a temporary practice that the administration is piloting. So I don't know that it warrants a board vote. I know we didn't do that last year. Excuse me. But I did want to provide an opportunity for board members to give input, to ask questions, and then also to create an awareness with the community that we're moving towards this. So again, we will not put a motion on the table, but this is the opportunity if anyone has any questions or comments for Dr. Almada to, you know, to articulate. Yes? Yes, absolutely.
So just to be clear, I've read through this. So the student, even though they're 18, their parent must give permission for it. So parents have to know this is happening. The student may only drive themselves out of the campus. They can't drive anybody else out, can't ride along with anybody else. They have to be back on time. They have to meet behavioral and academic criteria.
To be a good student, I want it to be equitable for all students. I don't want to get into, you know, we had a C, you had an A. But I want it to be... You have to at least be passing your classes. Like, you have better uses for those two helpers. If you're not passing your classes, it's... I just want to make sure they're a good student.
And I get that, you know, you can call a kid out, you know, a parent can call their child out. Will there be any monitoring of kids as they leave the school grounds? Watching cars or anything, just to kind of get a feel for it?
I don't have a staff, I want to be honest with you. I don't have a staff, that's why I want to charge the pilot. Some of the schools I spoke to have larger security teams. I have three staff members, three security staff members full-time, one part-time and just doesn't throw any... Everyone are bunchways. Like, I don't have the staff to do that. So that's their primary. However, either one of the security or the officer, I saw a road trade, is always at the front desk. That's why it's got to go there and they have to be... Because to begin to be completely honest, is anyone going to be monitoring the parking lot? We can't. We have to at least give them the opportunity to be honest. And try it. If it doesn't work, that's on you. So we want to give it a shot.
So it's not that different from any normal day? Not that I'm advocating anyone leave school grounds without permission, all that stuff. So it's not that different than...
Difference right now is to get a consequence when we find out they're out there rich getting a sandwich, because the teacher won't have to give one. And there's three kids up there. So right now, we're chasing those kids down for consequences and all that. And they're seniors, and that's the question all the time. Just want to get the sandwich, but you couldn't leave, because we don't have a campus policy right now. We just want to be upfront with them and try something.
No, thank you. It always makes me, you know, nervous now as a parent, but I completely understand the desire, one amongst the students, to want to be trusted, to go out. And I understand, you know, that need to... Or the feeling of administration, teachers, everybody, to try to see if the kids can handle it. Because as you said, you're right, they're going to be on their own next year. And not this huge transformation takes place in a couple of months. So I hope it goes well.
I do too, because I have a lot of running. I've been working with this group way too long, so I hope so too.
I just have two questions. One is, is the expectation that you have, if you sign out, you have to leave campus versus go down to the turf and throw the lacrosse ball? Do you actually have to leave campus?
I don't think any kid that signs out, I'm thinking, is probably just going to go. I think a lot of these kids just honestly want to have to leave the goal, eat lunch at home. There's not a lot of choice to go, but they're rich, and I don't think they're all going there. It's just the idea they want to be able to do this thing. They haven't defined exactly what that thing is, because it's not like there's a Dunkin' Donuts shop down the street or Starbucks. We don't have any of that, so they have to drive. But I think they just want this idea of going home. And I've heard some other ideas what they would do is ask them, what are you going to do for two hours? So like a study hall, that was like your answer. So I get that, just wanting to do something they don't have right now. But I don't think it's definitely hanging out there, throwing the ball around. I don't think that's... They could, I guess, but they're still on school campus, so... I don't think that's what they're going to do.
What are the repercussions if they get caught doing whatever they're not supposed to do?
Outlining the letter, they lose that privilege. And they, for every other class, is going to probably come back, oh, they're probably going to come back and make sure other classes, you did that in the pilot, can we try it? So this is a good trial run for this class. I think they're going to prove us all wrong, or prove us right, if they can handle the section responsible. We got to give them a chance.
Kathy, do you have any more questions? I just, so we can move through, just because I don't want... I don't want to keep everyone until 11 o'clock, because I don't... But I want everyone to have a... Karen, do you have more?
Oh, good, I know they're excited about it, but our tour, that was a big feature. It's been a discussion, yes.
For a long time, listen, so the fact that you were there, that's important. I got to tell them, you got to wait, you got to foster...
They should make a special mention.
You got to, yeah. You got to wait.
No, I'm in favor of the program. You know, we did it the previous year, and I think it was good for the kids that have the long blocks. You know, my son's advantage of it, so you know, the... Or we can come back or just leave the day. My only concern would be, again, you know, if the student chooses not to leave the campus grounds. Most, I totally agree with you, they're probably not going to stay and hang out in the parking lot or hang out in the fields. But if that happens, I would like to see some way to, you know, recommend or take the privilege away, because it is a security, it's a safety, there's still water grounds. If something happens, we're still liable.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, try to secure the building, secure the kids, and here and now, for saying, the board's okay with you being out in the grounds. Hanging out for two hours, how can they be doing whatever? That's a liability that kind of...
I'll make it perfectly clear, so I'd like to make sure.
When you leave, you leave, and then come back when you need to.
I just wanted to clarify, just because I'm unsure. Are there students who maybe have that study hall at the end of the day and they could potentially not return back to the school? They have that now, okay.
Seniors, senior classes, yes.
So if you had a job, you could go to your job early, potentially, right? So I do see that being a benefit for a lot of our students.
I actually remind the kids, I'm dating myself, if I went to high school, if you could prove to guidance that you had a job, you actually got work credit. You could leave. So if I had the last two periods, which all seniors figured a way to have, you actually now not only got to leave, you got a credit, there's a work study credit. So, but they have that privilege now, so if they have the last period. The only difference is, but again, magical gods, scheduling, they have the last two periods right now, they can only leave. The last of this, technically, if they like lunch, yeah, then they can leave a little bit. That would be the only difference.
The only thing I was going to add to that was, I think it's come up before that it would be beneficial to have some sort of a video monitoring system down the parking lot area. I... We do, okay. I know it's come up with accidents or little bumper things, so that could help with situations in that area as well, if anything were to happen.
In our cameras, they're being monitored.
Little junior lot. I think it's good, I think the trial's ready. And for the record, I checked, well, the whole policy didn't policy and recover. But there is instruction of administrations who are... Or who are visiting these.
One more follow-up question, when they come back in, they sign in, come to the front.
So unless it's the last student, they're coming back into the building. Oh, that's true, that's beautiful. The back, they get buzzed in, I'm sorry?
They'll walk around.
No, they have to get buzzed in, so like right now, when it comes away from the back, they get buzzed in, then it comes to the front.
So that would be the same if they're coming back.
That's the goal. We might be chasing them on the first couple of days, but that is our goal.
So I'm also in favor of pilot program. I would clarify that we don't have manpower to monitor the lot on a continual basis. However, you never know when we're there, right? Well, you're the watching and not doing your homework, really. You never know when we're there. No, but yes, I...
But a lot of administrators and security folks who have access to the cameras and could be...
And staff is all around and they're constantly moving, so I just wanted everyone to know that it's not like, you know, we just can't monitor continually what we are monitoring. And we do have... we just can't monitor continually what we are monitoring, and we do have...
My point is, my, no, it's going to be in the...
No, 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 I...
Okay, go Billy, oh John. No, but yes, of course.
I understand your point, I just, I just wanted to, to get a little aware, so. But no, I think it's a great idea, and they can be working on that.
So with your approval in hand, I'm going to send out a message to the families tomorrow this term. And I'll give permission, stuff that to the kids, and once they come in, like, starting next Tuesday, May second, sorry, next Monday, May second, which gives the kids about four, five weeks before exams, they're done.
As long as you can get it in their schedule, I read that sheet.
But yeah, I'm just asking, at some point in the future, can we get a report back?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. I can do that.
And we're staying with block schedule next year, if this is something, again, as pilot people, we're looking to implement permanently?
As a general thought, and as a new lock in this area, these roads would not, I would not be a fan of doing that during the winter time. That's why we want it towards the beginning. And again, I know the kids don't want to hear this, so that, they want to hear this, but it's the truth. These are not easy roads. I would want our kids navigating some of the ice storms we've had. However, this is May, I think this is a good time to try it, and if next year's class is supposed to be, I'm going to say it, wait this term.
So if we could get a report, how, it's something we might need to do.
Sure, sure.
Just breaking further followers.
Okay, any further questions? Tell us. No? Okay, we're on to, this guy's the daughter, ready. Item G. Who wants to read? Anyone want to read the motion? Todd?
Yes.
All right, thanks to me.
All right. Okay, so move that the contract employment for Caitlin Stevens, Karen Sullivan, and Virginia Woods not be renewed for the following year upon its expiration at the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. And that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons of writing as a possession. That's the motion, just a second.
There a second? Yes. You can have that one. Okay, any discussion?
Someone just...
Maybe clarification for public, what the intention is.
So, okay, so, um, it, we, we need to give notification for non-renewals, it's a legal requirement. And so those recommendations come from the superintendent. And so that is a motion articulating employees that are on the non-renewal list as recommended by the superintendent.
The only thing I would clarify is that these non-renewals are for reduction in costs.
So earlier in, during the meeting, we identified the possible position that was, that was only one position. But this is three, so then I think we clarified, and again, I just want to understand, right? I understand that there's no impact on the education or the number of classes, or the student joining classes. So I just don't understand whether we individuals listed, that's where I'm not connecting anything.
So... So again, um, I, I guess what I would say, and superintendent can say, is that this will not have any impact on coverage of students or, or number of class sections in any way. If that's helpful. Okay, so if there is no other comments or questions, we'll call the on favor. Any close? Any extensions? Okay. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. At this time, I'd like to, I'd like to request someone consider making a motion to add one item to the agenda. I'm still in the DPA, I haven't gotten to the committee. A very quick agenda item to discuss ARPA funding opportunities. Someone want to make that motion?
I want to discuss ARPA funding opportunities.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Very quickly. So basically, so there, there are opportunities for ARPA funding through the towns. They're looking at capital projects that qualify under the ARPA criteria, namely HVAC-related projects, sewer and water-related projects. Those type of infrastructure improvements qualify under the ARPA guidelines for funding. And so what I would like to request is that, I, I would like to pursue any opportunities from the towns that may be available, that we can get ARPA funding. And I will, I will detail a project, which is, we did the HVAC last year, and you'll all remember that we put two new chillers that supply the whole school, at the whole school, the areas of the school that have cooling. They provide the chilled water cooling for them, which is separate from the gym and the cafeteria. Those ones that provide the rest of the school. As we were doing the project, we did discover that the internal components of the water cooling tower are compromised and loaded with mineral deposits. And it's impacting the cooled water that's getting to the chillers. And so it, it impacts the performance of the chillers and the ability for the other rooftop units to provide optimal conditioning. And it's also probably because they're not getting ample supply, it can affect efficiency as well, which could be a cost. So the, the cost to replace the internal components is like ninety thousand dollars. And so, again, if the board deems it appropriate, I, I felt it might be at least a worthy approach to, at least approach to towns and see whether or not we can get any funding for the project. Again, it, it qualifies under the criteria for ARPA. And it's something that we would have to do anyway, so I just felt like, I would just put that out there for board members, whether they are in favor of me at least pursuing it, seeing whether or not we can get ARPA money from the towns.
Do we do some work with the chillers fairly recently?
No, they're brand new chillers.
So then, so again, the water, the water...
This is the water cooling tower that supplies the water to the chillers. That big metal object tower that's outside of the cafeteria that makes all the noise in the summer. That tower, the, gets water from a storage tank and chills it and condition it, and then it goes to the chillers. And the chillers extract the cooling from the water, and that's how you cool the building. So the internal components of the water cooling tower being, having, you know, mineral deposits and being compromised affects the efficiency of the system. And so again, it's, it's working, it's just not working to full capacity. And it's something that we would need to address at some point as well, because eventually it will impact that you won't get cooling. So again, it just seems like we, we replaced the chillers, the district made that commitment to, to replace the chillers. We put new rooftop units, we've made, you know, a commitment to, you know, addressing the issue of, you know, indoor air quality for students and staff, I think that's the key. And so this is another component of that, and it's something that we discovered and is failing, so I just thought...
So you're looking for a motion for the board, board chair, or Scott, to talk to the towns about ARPA? Once you've got a commitment from the towns that they'll come back with a project, go to RFP, and all that, to actually do the work?
Um, yes, well, so, yes, I'm looking for approval to talk to the towns. I would also say that as opposed to doing an RFP, it's, it's a Marley cooling tower. It's proprietary, you can only get components from Marley itself, which is in Massachusetts. There are limited vendors that can do this work. This, we had someone come in and look at it from a firm in Massachusetts, because that's where Marley is, when we were doing the project. So again, this, I don't have a price yet, because I, I didn't want to work outside of the board. But my preference would be to do it in alignment with how we did the project, using the EZIQC state procurement policy, a, a program rather, so that we could get the vendor that would be, you know, the proprietary vendor that could do that work. And again, that's fully compliant with state, you know, all state requirements, it's prebid, as I explained.
So if it wasn't proprietary, it was a manufacturer, that provision exists in where there's limited ability to go out for multiple bids? To make sure that pricing is competitive?
Yes, well, yes, I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak and say that nobody else could do it. What I'm saying is that it's proprietary, there are limited vendors that are qualified to do that. But also what I'm saying is that I don't know that there's opportunity to realize great savings by having a wide array of bids, because it's such a, you know, a proprietary and limited field, that I would, you know, again, I, I would prefer to use the state procurement policy, which, uh, program, sorry, same policy, which they have already prebid that work. So in other words, it, it's still being bid, it's just done in advance, rather than soliciting outside bids and doing that work.
So let's first figure out we...
Well, that's the thing, so step number one would be, I'd get, I'd get the price from them, and then go to the town and ask. And, and that's really what we're doing. And then if they say yes, it comes back here and, you know, board has to approve, board has to be, you know...
So, I'm sorry, so you've thrown another piece into this. So who are you getting the pricing from, and how are we going to...
Through the EZIQC program.
So you, EZIQC, you get a quote, so that you can know they want to ask the town?
Well, and actually, it would, yeah, rather than, it's not, yeah, it's a, it's a firm quote, in other words, just like we did the other project. I would get a, a proposal from them, that the Gordian Group, which is the Watchdog Group, would review and make sure everything was in line with, you know, the guidelines of the program, to make sure that the pricing and everything was what it's supposed to be. And then we would have that proposal that we could move forward with, you know, which would might be my preferred method. But if we get the, the funding from the town, and the board feels like they wanted to go out to bid, I think it would take more time and, and, you know, might not give you the results you needed, but it's certainly an option. We're not locked in, just getting a price and seeing whether the town will give us funding.
Because you would run that to facilities, or you just kind of skip facilities and...
Well, again, so I would say this, if it, if the town do not agree to give us funding for it, then it's something that has to be added to our capital plan, and then the facilities committee has to review it, and then, you know, at the appropriate time, we'll have to bring it back to this board. You know, it's, it's not going away, is what I'm saying, it's just, should we see whether we can get funding for it?
Do you need the exact dollar amount, or...
I do not, I, I do not from that.
You know, it's roughly ninety thousand.
That's what, and I wanted everyone to know, obviously, I, it's not, I don't believe it's more than ninety thousand. What, I, 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 I'm basing that on the, the pricing from the vendor last year and calculating the costs, you know, associated with the, with the program and the building department and all that stuff. So that's kind of what I just factored in and came up with a ballpark of ninety, but we would have a firm price proposal.
So because it's two, you would go to both towns, Easton and Reading?
I would go to both towns.
And is the expectation that they, you would ask them, for example, forty-five and forty-five, or...
Well, so I guess what I would say is that I have to see how it goes. I think, I think, I think Easton has plans that aren't in alignment with giving small amounts to different districts. I think they have a major project that they're planning to do. But Reading is doing a different approach, where they have a working group, and they're evaluating projects on a case-by-case basis. But I, I think that my first, I did speak to, for selectmen of Easton a little bit about it. I did, you know, approached, actually with, with the finance director in Easton, and asked whether there would be any opportunities. And she said, you know, you can, you can try, right? But like I said, I just figure we, we, it doesn't hurt to try. I think that, you know, we, we have been, you know, worthy stewards of the town, that we have budgeted and we, we provide for the students. And I think that ARPA money is, you know, kind of earmarked for that, and it's appropriate. And I, I just feel like, you know, whatever we can do to help our students, if we can get funding for it, we should do that, so.
And would we need the entire amount funded, or if we were able to get partial funding, does that, does that still work?
That all comes, all comes back to, to this board. I think the first step is just to see whether or not we can get money from both towns, or either town, or what.
Happy to make a motion if we want to go approach the towns on behalf of the board, find out what they're willing to give, if anything, and then take it back to the facilities committee, have the facilities committee come up with, you know, again, how much money we're getting, looking at the options. If you have a project done, and they come back to the board, see if there's money, and they go to the facilities committee, or how many does, if there's another...
Yeah, absolutely. This is just, you know, exploring the funding opportunity, that's all.
Todd, can you make one?
I'll make that motion, and I'll move that the, I read yours, that Sam, thank you. Region nine, Board of Education, because I got a lot of ARPA stands for, authorize the board chairperson to pursue American Rescue Plan funding opportunities for the restoration of the water cooling tower at Joel Farlowe High School.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Is there any other discussion?
I'll just add, as the board, and I, I could go anywhere, if the board want to identify specifically now, or if it's...
We, again, we don't have a firm price yet.
They're going to like, opt to, but maybe you have enough other suspenders in terms of coming back to the...
Yeah, and, and actually, we're, we're seeking the grant, we're not allocating any money, so it's, it's, whatever the, you know, I'm not going to say whatever, we want... it's, whatever the, you know, I'm not going to say whatever, we want the whole amount, but I'm just saying, you know. Okay?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
Can you send me that too, please?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry. We just love this so much. Sorry for talking like. So, okay, so we're on to item nine, which is committee reports. We've heard from policy, Sarah, you want to speak anymore on that?
Thank you.
Any, any other committee reports?
I have nothing.
I know, but nothing else, so, well, because I was going to ask Karen about food service.
It's coming up, we've got a meeting to review the proposals from the different vendors. Sorry, I wasn't prepared to say that. May eighteenth, Wednesday, at four P M. here, and the presentations will be by the people who decided to put their, you know, the proposals in.
Right. Okay. Thank you, thank you for that work. And now the Revening Pension Committee update.
I'm going to start on page one of our ninety-five page deck. We have colorful charts and graphs to keep you all under control.
We have a lot of questions.
Pension on Monday. We did share the news about what we allocated in the budget for the pension, which was different than what they recommended, and lower, like in the stock market, they'll rise again and it might be unexpendable money that at the end of this year, we might be able to contribute into, like we've done in years past, to bring up the difference. So these are that. From an overall portfolio perspective, I do have extra packets, if you does want to read through it in your spare time, but for the quarter, all the markets, everything's been down, so was our pension plan, and we were down six point six-three percent in the first quarter. The benchmark was down four point nine-seven percent, so we're down a little more than our benchmark was. And we're still in good overall funding status in the mid-eighties, we're still just down to a very good market, it's down, if you follow the markets, so most of our bucks are down like this. Do you not need changes in the investment allocation or a couple of months that we're going to keep an eye on for future decisions? Do you change out just based off of, as well, the USA, the USI investors, changing outlets at a key time?
I remember, stay the course. I remember this half, probably the last quarter before the committee was being constituted, there were a few watch funds that were on the list, were they still the same ones?
Same ones.
Okay.
So we put them on our look list, since they're still on the watch list.
The watch list?
Yes.
And then we were still okay with the return on, I assume, assuming, kind of the base assumptions for the pension plan itself, right?
Yes, I made adjustments to those of the previous meeting, it's nine-six percent of our, that's the target.
Okay. Further committee reports?
I have a question for the audit committee, so any update on, thank you for the update on the special audit, how about the regular audit?
I do not have an update on that. I can, I can get you an update on that. I know that there's been some questions raised from the public about, you know, whether or not that has come to, you know, whether or not we filed and gotten all that done. We did do a couple of extensions, so I know that we're, we're still compliant, but it's a good question to look at whether or not that has been fully resolved, and I will definitely get you an answer on that.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item ten, public comments. Hearing none, we're on to item eleven, board member comment. It's only ten-thirty, we still have thirty minutes.
I have a question around the AP class being offered to teenagers, you know, it's been mentioned in the past that if this incoming fall, that there was discussion around potentially two classes, the government and AP computer programming, STEM plus, and as the schedules are being calculated any day now, where does that stand as a reality for the fall for sophomores?
I'll let Dr. McKinnon speak to that, but I'm fairly certain that staff has a plan for creating that awareness of those opportun, potential opportunities.
Yes.
But I'd like Dr. McKinnon to speak to that.
And Dr. O'Meaden can jump in too. I asked J T. Shem for an update, and, I mean, I'm still looking at his, their original goal was to go into some advisory periods, talk to the freshman students about the course offerings for next year, and they were going to show an AP Computer Science video, but they've decided instead to look at the course schedule, which they just received from Gail Persko at the middle of the week, and they're analyzing the number of seat allocations, possibly it could be thirteen, they're looking at conflicts, and. So they're in, so they're in the process of working out a plan, basically, but their plan includes telling the students, so they're just working out the details.
Potentially we're going to find the latest five students that that could work for, for sophomore class. It's the only class that we potentially want is that computer class for sophomores. The other class that we mentioned back in the book, that does not work in the schedule, because we do not have staff to go on that class, that class wasn't real at all, I forgot which one it was, one that you identified, I believe you're right, I don't want to speak on it, I believe you're right, but I know the computer class is one that we did a little research, was offered to ten kids and surrounded, I don't think it's something that's comfortable. We have a teacher that's running the class already, and we have the seats, so we are trying to see which gets, that could work for. We may think I'm fair, I think it's fair said, and we've come to about five, the problem is, as you said, we just got the master schedule, the way it works is, Gail Persko is our amazing IT person, who is been this, after many years, side note, congratulations, her decision, she was just going to work with us to the end of the year virtually, which she's decided. So she is a master of creating master schedule, so we just got that in the hands of guidance, they're now polyphile students, and they're meeting them to work out conflicts, classes they put in, so they're going to learn the second option, the options, and it's during that process, then we're also pulling the sophomores, but I'm very confident we'll be able to get some sophomores into that next year's AP class.
So it's not a matter of students, of incoming sophomores being able to say, I'd like to take that class, and teacher recommendation, and being able to say, please add that to my schedule, I would like to add that now that I know about it. It sounds like there's a handful of students who will be notified that they, that they will have that opportunity, or five students will be given that opportunity based solely on their scheduling, and I'm.
Five have said they're interested, we're comfortable we can make that work, there's probably eleven to twelve seats that, especially kids that we put in, the problem is, we went through the budget cycle, the budget, I'm in the budget, I apologize, the scheduling of the, we were already in the process of that, so we'll go back if it's, we couldn't, but now that the schedule is set in stone per se, we know who's teaching what, what's the availability, how many kids got into certain sections, now we can go back and see who could we add, which is a regular scheduling process, we're just adding an extra layer in contact and sophomores, future sophomores that don't have a conflict and can go in. We only want it one period, it's already in, it's already in the schedule as one period, so it isn't, who can't take it, let me try, no, it has to be, which sophomores happen to have that period available.
So they won't have an opportunity potentially to switch something in their schedule, for example?
They could, they could, they could, kids make decisions all the time.
But would they, how will they know that they have that opportunity to join that class?
It depends on which class that they're interested in swapping for, I mean, in some ways that could happen, but many ways, if it's an English, if it's a math, if it's a requirement, no, we're not talking to that kid, but if it's an elective, we're letting them know there's one additional elective, that you could, that you could opt to take. But that's again, if the student is taking an elective that we think this would add to their schedule, can't be, we can't start changing schedules from the required courses.
We're all, I think what Kathy's saying, we're all students made aware that there is the opportunity to take an AP in chemistry.
We, as Dr. McKinnon said, we are trying to create a video, student video, that talks about what is the experience, and share that with all advisors, so everybody's over here. But again, not everyone will be able to make that fit in their schedule.
Right, I understand.
But we will try to make that at least available to every sophomore.
Is there the possibility, thinking now about the following year, that more opportunities or more offerings for APs could be made available to sophomores?
Sure, and this question through the cycle, it's our goal to see, what else we can find, sure?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, it seems like this is a function of this decision being made a little possible, late in the games, and if we had, if we had been talking about this in September and October, that would have been in the mix when they were picking out their schedules in January, or selecting their courses, and you guys would have the opportunity to add in the AP conf gov or whatever, the second one, I think it was the social studies, and that could have been addressed and applied to that. So I feel like for next year's sophomores, a year after, there, it'll be a lot more normal thing, where they're selecting an AP just like a kid going into senior year would select one, because that's always been our philosophy to have as many, if we have sixty kids who want a class, we're going to have three sections kind of thing, in our general philosophy.
Sixty kids that are sophomores into?
I just think in general, they're exceptionally sophomores, sophomores of two, yes. Fingers crossed.
I think everybody is very excited that you're looking at the opportunity to add AP classes for sophomores and potentially freshmen even at some point. It sounds like that all sophomores, it's, you know, it's the end of April almost, and it doesn't sound like the incoming sophomores are aware of this unless they've been, like twelve or thirteen kids were tapped and said, this potentially could fit in your schedule, given what we see, and, but there's a hundred and, you know, two hundred other sophomores who don't even know it's happening, and potentially come fall when they get their schedule, and their friend has said, oh, I'm taking AP this, and they're saying, well, I take, I'm taking engineering, I would have taken that class, is that, is that a risk? Or has every sophomore, is every incoming student who would be a candidate for this class been, has every single schedule been vetted for that?
I think there are two steps. Step one is, they're developing a video to show to all students, and step two is to identify those students that they know can make that change, which I think will, I, the email I read about thirteen, but then, yes, to answer your first question, all students know that this is an option, but it only fits thirteen students at the moment, that have the ability to, to either, they can take something during that period.
So how flexible are we? In other words, if I'm a sophomore, freshman, and I didn't know that there was an opportunity to take an AP, and my schedule right now doesn't fit that class, but I want to change a bunch of classes to make that opportunity available to myself?
Let me just question that, guys. People, be very careful what you're wishing for, Karen. It wasn't that long ago that we had this discussion, if this is in charge and the board wants, you got it, but you have to look at staff, you have to look at, so we can't, there's certain requirements they have to take, we can't go and change schedules, flip them around to make one class fit, so please, I hear what you're saying, but again, as one particular member said, we kind of went a little late to this game, let's add a class, we're going to try the best that we can, but the schedule was in the process of being built when we were having these discussions. We start that schedule very early, very early, so I don't want to make any promises of putting a message out that might be perceived that, sure, they can go to guidance tomorrow and say, yeah, I want to search my whole schedule around, it's not that easy to change a schedule that's already in there. We right now start with a master list from Yale of all the courses that the kids got their first and second choices, then we go to third choices, then we try to work out conflicts, certain kids back out, don't want that class, in some situations, when they make some movements, and some opening seats come up, but they don't want it in any way, portray the message that, start showing up and let's change your own on the schedule.
No, and that's fair, I guess what I asked was, do we have the flexibility if a student wanted to rearrange their schedule? And the simple answer is no, there's certain constraints that we have that only certain students fit into that, you know, that, well, that they will have that opportunity, that we can't just go rearranging schedules, but it's still a valuable question to ask so that we can articulate to the public and to the students who are watching that we simply can't do that, right? So oftentimes when the question is asked, it's more informational than suggestive, as we often take it, it's.
Should I create a schedule mine for eight hundred and forty kids?
Again, I realize the challenge is, we just have to be clear that we articulate so students know.
It's more like, more like a pilot year, I would anticipate that next year when we're scheduling.
Be more, be more.
I'm thinking, because I think we all appreciate the scheduling matrix that has to have it for eight hundred and forty kids. I think it's a messaging issue largely to students and to parents, and when incoming freshman parents and students hear that there is an AP course that is thirteen or five, however many sophomores are taking, and they didn't know about it, and now they're saying, well, why couldn't I select, but that wasn't an option when I filled out my form and nobody told me about it, what, what's going on? That's, I think, a messaging issue that needs to be considered as this gets out and as people hear about it, because it's exciting and it's new, and it's very appealing to families and students. And I think if kids, if current freshmen are going to be shown video about these opportunities, but the reality is, it's not, it's not really an opportunity unless they're one of these twelve kids, is that, is that a happy thing for these kids to, it's like, you know, here's dessert, but you can't have it, these twelve kids got it, but it's not for you this year? I think that's my thinking, is that this is a messaging issue on how we want to, because we, because it was a late decision, and it's a great decision, I think, but it, it's, it needs to come across as a great decision, not as twelve kids were handpicked for an classic sophomore year, and nobody else knew about it. Scheduling issues, I think everybody appreciates the scheduling issues, but it's a communication issue that I think merits some care and thought about how parents and students are going to feel when they didn't know about it and they didn't have a choice to even register for it.
But I agree that it's going to take a certain amount of finesse, we're just in this tricky spot right now where it was discussed throughout the budget process. I think you yourself, when you first raised the question, were asking, you know, it's I think you yourself, when you first raised the question, were asking, you know, it's, it doesn't seem fair if we only target thirteen kids that we can set for, shouldn't all know about it, but at the same time, to your dessert point, now we're letting all, everyone know about it, but it only benefits a certain number of students. So we're going to have to kind of walk that tightrope, and just say, this is a, a working process, we're trying to expand programs and give students more opportunities. And, um, there's going to be some growing pains, and I agree, it's, we're going to have to communicate the best we can. There's not, there's not, you know, if, if, if you turn left, there may be some concerns, if you turn right, there may be some, so, so, so. We'll have to finish that, so.
Okay. Good morning, Karen. Fourteen minutes away.
We'll do it, we'll do it, she's got it.
There's a motion due during, it's a second, uh, here during, and soon.